Before we get into our normal business, I need to ask, have any members of the commission had any ex parte communication concerning either one of these cases?
No.
No.
I have.
Okay.
This is my neighborhood, so I've had quite a few conflicts.
Which one would that be?
The Penile. The Mr. Smith project.
The Penile Road? Okay.
I know Mr. Smith, I hear there's some of the neighbors on that road. None of the conflict I ever sway my opinion in that. I'm going to be able to make unbiased opinion on that, but I just want to let you know this is my neighborhood and I do know a lot of folks that are affected by this project.
They're here. Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anything else? Does anyone have a conflict of interest that would affect their voting on this case? Either cases?
Yes.
Okay. Then let's get started. This is a public hearing and we're the Putnam County Planning Commission. We are the designated local planning agency for the county as prescribed in chapter 163 of the Florida statutes, and we function under the authority of Articles 11 and 12 of the Putnam County Land Development Code. The primary responsibility of the commission is to serve as an advisory body to hear and make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners on matters related to provisions of and proposed amendments to the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan and the Putnam County Land Development Code. The members of this board will review each application and make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners at their next regularly scheduled meeting. Case PSA 24-00002 will be heard by the County Commission on January 14, 2025. Rezoning 24-000011 will be heard by the Board of County Commissioners on January 28, 2025. Procedurally, we will call each case by name and number. A member of the staff will then briefly explain to us the nature of each request. We will then take any comments from the applicant or their representative, followed by any public comments concerning the request. Please direct all comments or statements to the board and not to other people in the audience. Before speaking, we will ask each person to be recognized, come forward to the lectern, and identify his or herself by name and address. After all persons wishing to speak have been heard, we will entertain a motion from the board. This motion will be voted on by the board members and become our recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners will make the final determination regarding each application. All applicants have the right to withdraw their requests at any time during the application process. There have been no cases withdrawn for today's meeting. The first case to be heard is PSA 24-00002. Mr. Graves.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. For the record, Michael Graves, Planning and Development Services, and once again, this is PSA 24-00002 for the MD Smith &amp; Sons LLC. This is a type 1 subdivision known as Beverly Crossing. The subject property is located at the intersection of East Penile Road and Penile Church Road in Palaca. The subject parcel combined is approximately 14.4 acres total with a future land use of urban reserve and a current zoning of residential 1. The applicant requests the preliminary and final plat approval for the addition of 14 lots resulting in a proposed 16-lot residential subdivision. The residential density requirement is two units per acre due to the lack of centralized water and/or sanitary sewers present. This is met by the proposed density of 1.1 units per acre. The property was rezoned to residential 1 via ordinance 2021-031, and all the proposed lots will be of sufficient size to meet the zoning district requirements. You can see here the aerial of the properties to be affected, and the zoning, the future land use. And finally, we have come to the plat, which is multi-page in nature due to the level of detail provided by the applicant. The land affected by the plat are within the urban reserve future land use category as mentioned before, are adjacent to and accessed by a paved county maintained road, and are not within the military restricted operating zone. The plat adheres to all regulations for its current zoning district as well as regulations for the future land use category. The request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of Putnam County Comprehensive Plan and is compatible with the surrounding zoning and uses, and it is furthermore consistent with the requirements of the Putnam County Land Development Code. As such, staff recommends approval of the request for the preliminary and final plat approval for the plat for the Beverly's Crossing subdivision resulting in a 16-lot residential subdivision. Any questions?
Are there any questions of staff at this time? Hearing none, I will ask, is the owner applicant available? Would you like to come forward and talk to us? Please come forward, give us your name and address, and share your concerns and thoughts with us.
Rick Parkinson with BG RP Engineering, 555 Blandine Boulevard, Orange Park, 32073. I don't have any further comments as to what Michael.
Okay. Sir?
Michael Smith, 1070 South State Road, 19.
You're the owner.
Address.
You're the owner.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you're the agent. Anything you would like to share with us about this proposed subdivision?
Nothing additional to what Mike said.
Okay. Alrighty. Well, then I thank you, and we'll continue with the hearing. We may need to ask you questions.
No problem.
At a later time. Okay, thank you so much. I do have one speaker card for this case. Brett Bennett, would you come forward and give us your name and address and tell us your concerns?
Brett Bennett, 350 Penile Church Road. It's hard for me to get up here and tell y'all what I think y'all should do with somebody else's property whenever y'all telling me what I can do with mine. I understand Mike's in the business of building houses, and he's got a big piece of property here that he can build houses on. I get that, that's how he makes his living. Just thinks that it has to be in our neighborhood and the rural way of life that we live around there. I do have some concerns. At the end of the paved road, several lots, it's downhill, the land slopes to the south. Where the pavement ends, it's all private road. We spend thousands of dollars in rock. Diesel fuel tractors are equipment because the water runs down the road and washes out our private road. I've seen in the staff report that there's going to be HOA, and then the HOA is going to be in charge of the drainage for this neighborhood. How are they going to keep that from washing, you know, down our way because it's going to be a lot more than what it already is now? And I guess it's a question of making this one-acre lots out of the... It's going to be three-quarter acre lots, there's no way to make this one-acre lots, right?
I think not every lot is going to be exactly one acre, and there's going to be, I think, at least one parcel that's not going to be built on.
If memory serves correct, it is three-quarter acre lots for the majority of properties.
Okay.
And then, just one more thing. I know this is the very tip of the iceberg for subdivisions in Putnam County. I know 700 homes just got approved in East Palaca, so there's no way we're going to disapprove of 14 homes. But is there a stop measure somewhere eventually down the road where we say, okay, that's enough? Because we, you know, we don't want to end up like our neighbor to the east, St. John's County, where it's just slap full of subdivisions. The Putnam County Comprehensive Plan states that maintain and manage the county's natural resources and quality of life by establishing a pattern of development that is harmonious with the county's natural environment and supports the rural and agrarian nature. A county full of subdivisions doesn't support that at all. I just was wondering if there's a stop measure somewhere, I'm sure that'll be years down the road, that we don't get slap full of subdivisions.
I think that's probably something that will happen down the road. The Comprehensive Plan is not a document that is cast in stone. It's a document that's very fluid, it can be amended at any time, and I think it has to be amended on a 10-year basis, I think 10- or 15-year basis. We've... Seven-year basis, okay. We're already a couple of years into this one, so we will be looking at it again. It'll be thoroughly reviewed, and that's the time when we need input from the public. And there will be advertisements about public meetings, and that's when we really will need people like you to come forth and share your concerns, share your comments, share, you know, your fears and your anxieties, and these are things that need to be heard by the commission. And that will certainly be an opportunity that you will have at that time. Keep an eye out for advertisements in the paper. It's going to be probably four years before we start that process, but we'll also be looking at items in the Land Development Code in the meantime. And your opinion is very important to us. The opinion of everybody that lives in Putnam County is something that we need to take into consideration. And the more people who come forward and talk to us and share with us, the better we can do our job to represent you as Putnam County citizens. And also, talk to your elected official, whoever your county commissioner is in that district, talk to him or her, and let your concerns be known. Because we're not... We just make a recommendation to the VOCC. The next step is, they will take this up at their meeting, and they will completely flesh this out too. But I thank you for coming forward, and I respect your concerns.
Yes, ma'am. My only concern was the drainage, and maybe the engineer can...
And I think that's something we need to look at, because we've seen this piece of property before.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak either for or against? Please come forward, and I'll take that issue, come up, and give us your name and address, and share your concerns with us. Mr. May?
My name is Jonathan May. I'm at 301 Penile Church Road, and I'm the one that's been taking care of the road recently. After all the drainage, I've had my tractor out working on it, and then neighbors all got together, and we spent quite a bit of money on rock and putting stuff in where the pavement ends. And so, I share my neighbors' concerns about the drainage issue. That's a significant issue. I do not know Mr. Smith, don't have anything personal against him, it's just I would prefer, as my neighbor would, to see these lots at a minimum of one-acre lots. It's... My concern is the impact that we're going to have with the amount of traffic on the road with that amount of homes in the area, and that moving in. It's a very rural area, if you've been out there taking a look at it, it's quiet, and I'm very concerned about the amount of traffic that's going to be on the road. We do have quite a few young children in the area, and so that's something that I'm concerned about as well. But I'm mostly, I would like to see the one-acre minimum if possible, and the drainage issue is a big concern of mine as well.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak either for or against this particular application? Yes, sir, please come forward and give us your name and address, and when you're finished, fill out one of our speaker cards.
Belle Parker, 310 Penile Church Road. The drainage issue is a concern. My other concern is traffic, as he mentioned, and what is the possibility that down the road, these lots can be split and divided into more lots and more housing? Because we do cherish our rural community.
I think we can answer that question for you. Michael, can you answer that?
I certainly can. The lots will not be sufficient in size to be split further. The minimum size requirement for the residential 1 zoning district is one-half acre in size. As these lots are three-quarters of an acre, they would not be allowed to be further subdivided without any sort of rezone. It is worth noting, of course, that it is the urban reserve future land use category. If you were to have centralized water and/or sanitary sewer in this area, then the density allotment would be 12 units per acre. However, until such a time as rezone were to occur for, say, residential 3 or residential 4 that allows for multifamily, there's just simply no way that they could further divide this and have that level of intensity in your area. This is essentially more than what is required to limit density. Like I said, half an acre would be the minimum, but they're giving three-quarters of an acre.
And it was rezoned in 2021 to Zone 1?
I believe that's where the ordinance was.
What was it zoned before?
Agriculture, if memory serves right, which is considered a holding zone in the urban reserve and is desired by the county to be rezoned out of agriculture.
I believe this was a prior case that had come before us.
Yes.
And we...
2021.
I think we did it in 21. There was a request at that time for a subdivision that never came to fruition, but that's when it was rezoned to urban service.
Okay. Thank you.
So, thank you. Thank you, Michael. Could I bring the owner and the agent back up and ask you to address the... How you're going to mitigate drainage issues, and what's your anticipated traffic flow is going to be for that subdivision?
As far as traffic, I can't remember what the ITE, that's the International Traffic Engineering Handbook. I can't remember what single-family trip generation is, but I think the difference between one acre and the three-quarter acre lots that we're proposing is, it was like an additional two or three lots. Talking about two or three more homes for that. I want to say it's like two per the trip, average daily trip generation is two per single-family home.
That's the historical data.
Yes, but I'm going from memory from like...
That's okay. We're more concerned about the drainage issue.
So, if you look at the plat, we do have drainage easements that are shown on those lots, that there will be a series of swales for each lot, especially so like half of... Our subdivision is on the one side where it's on the south side of the wetland. Half of those lots do drain towards that corner where they're concerned about the drainage, but we'll have a series of side yard swales that as the water is heading down there, it'll stop each flow for each lot. The soils are very good there, the water table is quite low, so basically those swales will infiltrate most of that water, and there will be an improvement of the rate of flow going into that corner.
There won't be any piping or culverting or anything like that?
Only be culvert for the driveways going across the right-of-way as well. That's it.
Okay.
There's just not any direction annotated on the drawing in the easement to show which way the flow is expected to go.
Yeah.
But that...
I mean, I'm sure you guys are going to solve that when you have your site development plan from Public Works.
Right, DRC.
So, I'm sure that will be addressed in the future when you actually develop it, but the initial drawings, you know, that's part of the confusion of the fluids of the drainage easement is there's no direction on there, and then obviously, they do have legitimate concerns on that last lot down there because that's where the pavement ends, and it's a pretty... It's an ongoing battle down there, so that last lot will be probably your biggest chore as far as keeping the water out of the road, but he's right about the rest of that. It's all a sand hill, it water-dutting drain, or dutting flow. It just seeps into the ground for the longest part unless we have a dramatic water.
Good soils, and the water table is quite low, what we're talking about.
And the swales will be established when each lot is built out?
Correct.
Now, is there going to be anything during the construction phase that's going to mitigate that water flow down that road from affecting those people that live south of there?
There are all kinds of options that we will make sure get done, from synthetic hay bales to, there will definitely be silt fencing and construction swales to divert that flow just to make sure that during construction, we don't have, you know, huge rate of flow going in that corner.
Michael, is that something that we can build into our approval that the owner will assure that drainage will be mitigated during construction for those southern lots?
I'm afraid not, Ms. Commissioner.
Okay. Just checking.
It's something the state makes us do, we have to do, and gives us permit for every subdivision that we're building, or any kind of thing that you're building, you have to go through the state.
Any idea where the water is flowing in those most southerly lots? Which direction it... You guys intend to send it?
So, it'll be collected in each swell where it'll...
So, the objective is that it collects in the swell and dutton leave the property? So, it's...
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, and I guess one final question, and this may not be something we can do either, but are you willing to give those owners in the southern end of this area an assurance that if there is damage to the road, that you will repair it? If it's something that's caused by this construction and this work, that the owner, applicant, contractor, whomever, will assume the responsibility for repairing that road?
The contractor will definitely have to take responsibility for that.
So, the contractor will definitely have to take that responsibility.
It will.
Will there be one single contractor, or will each site be built out separately? Will we one single contractor? Okay, so that contractor will be aware of this issue and will assume responsibility in the contract for any repair that needs to be done to the road or damages caused by construction?
Make sure of that. Yes.
Okay. All right. Does that help assuage some of the concerns that we have here today? Okay. All right. Anything else you'd like to share with us?
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
I don't have any additional information from... I understand historically, I think there's been a problem in that corner.
Yeah.
What we have to do is make it better.
Well, I do remember in 2021, when we saw this site before, it was extremely wet. I mean, there was a lake at the intersection down at the bottom of the road. So, I understand what you're saying, or what the people are saying. I've seen it, and we've seen it. So, hearing you tell us that this is something you will mitigate and something that you will offer repair to the road if there's any damage. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, caused by the construction.
Yes, caused by the construction. Yes.
And the section of the road that's affected by not having pavement is beyond where the construction's going to take place. It's just, I mean, the only part in question as far as drainage goes that's going to affect what they're bringing up as far as the end of the road down there is the last lot.
Right.
So...
I would hope that last lot will be protected before you begin any construction. And I hope that last lot will be swaled out and protected before any construction is begun. Because you've got neighbors there that have concerns, and we want this to be a happy subdivision.
We're good neighbors.
Okay. We want that to happen. Anything else the board would like to... Any other person in the audience who would like to speak either for or against this particular case? Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Bring it back to the board for consideration, discussion, and motion.
I had one more question for them.
Okay.
Just, Mike, are you guys going to bring the construction traffic down the road to each lot, or are you going to have an entrance and access the subdivision away from the main road so that you have made like one entrance and exit from... Have you guys considered that?
You'll need to come up to the podium to answer that question, but good question. Thank you. So, will your construction traffic and your deliveries and all of your...
I'm just curious, if you guys are going to have like one entrance to the place where y'all, you know, you come down part of the...
We have a big right-of-way there, but I wouldn't carry any... No, we would have to go down the road, yes.
You will go down the road.
I was just asking if you're going to build out like... You know how the roads kind of, you have a higher level to the road next to the road and then come down the power line?
We could if we started in the back and moved forward, but we may not be able to do that.
Depends on...
I just know if you guys have plans.
We would cut into someone else's property. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
What is your projected start date for this project?
Soon, soon as I can get it. Soon as we can, yes.
Okay. Alrighty, and how long do you think it will take to build it out completely?
We don't have a...
Depends on how it sells.
Exact plan on that yet.
Depends on how it sells.
Yeah.
Okay. Alrighty. Any other questions of our owner/agent?
It could take five years to do it. I mean, we don't...
We don't know.
Yeah.
It's not like a planned unit development, you have to give us a time certain, so... But just was curious to see what your thoughts were.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Anything else from the board? I've got a couple people other than that want to speak, and I will accept that. You all may be seated. And ma'am, if you want to come forward and fill out a form after you speak, we'll be glad to have that.
My name is Lori Gill, and I'm at 310 Penile Church Road. My question is, when they get the go-ahead to start this project, are they going to clear the entire, is it 14 acres? Or is it going to be done on a as purchased, lot-purchased basis?
We can answer that question. Thank you. Michael, you need to come back up.
Do I have a question?
Yes.
Thank you, Lori.
We don't plan on clearing a lot of it. We're going to keep all the trees that we can. We're going to clear just what we have to to build the house. We don't want to clear... We're not going to clear all the...
Will this be done before you sell, or on a lot-by-lot basis?
As far as how many trees you get, that'll be the owner who...
The owner... So, you won't be going in and clearing any land until the lot is sold?
For the house is being built.
And you've got plans?
And then it'll be the owner, whoever purchased the property there, whatever they want to build, take out if they can. Yeah.
Okay. So, basically, the answer to that question is no. It will not be cleared upfront. Sir, you had a question, you wanted to come back up. I'm going to give you just a minute. I'll take your 30 seconds, Mr. May. Please give us your name and address again.
Jonathan May, 301 Penile Church Road. My one question was, are these going to be spec houses, or are they going to be built to order? Built to... You buy the property, he builds the house, or is he building them to spec and then leaving them there and just selling them?
It sounds like they're going to be built to order once they're sold and a contractor come, you know, gets plans developed, but... come, you know, gets plans developed, but he's shaking his head, yes. You're not going to do spec homes? No spec homes are going to be built for this? Okay, I, I need you back up here, I'm sorry. That was more than a yes or no answer.
I mean, the houses will be built as we sell them, pretty much. I mean, we're not going to just build a bunch of houses to sit there, if that's the question.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Not going to do a model home and then?
No.
Okay, all righty. Do I have anyone else who would like to speak either for or against this particular case?
They're more custom homes.
They're custom homes, okay. I will bring it back to the board then. Any other questions from the board to anyone else? All right, board, this is up to us now to speak, talk about this and make a decision. I'll entertain a motion or we can have discussion, preferably a motion.
I'll take, I'll make a motion to approve PSA 24-000002 as it is consistent with our comprehensive plan.
Okay, we have, Stanley has seconded, Aaron made the motion, it's proper. Discussion. Let me just say, I appreciate everyone coming forward and sharing your concerns. Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, like sign. It's carried unanimously. The next step will be, this will go before the Board of County Commissioners on January the 14th and it'll be a time certain, probably 9:00 AM. So Jennifer, you're going to do our next case? All right. Thank you so much for being here, folks. You're welcome to stay. It's not going to be long. It might be fun.
Can I leave now too?
They're all leaving us. Thank you, Michael. Jennifer, you ready? Okay, got to bring it up.
I'm going to be the one to get up and complain and talk about stuff on business.
Are you?
I'm kidding. Nobody's here, so somebody's got to say something.
And you didn't even declare a, yeah, somebody's got to say something. Ms. DeSantis is going to sit back there and be nice and quiet. Okay, we're ready.
For the record, Jennifer Gazella, Planning and Development Services. We are hearing case REZ 24-000011. Johnny and Elsie Ramirez are requesting a zoning map amendment from Commercial Retail C2 to Commercial General C3 on a 0.79 acre parcel located at 229 North Highway 17 in Palaca to allow for a landscape supply business. The subject site is Zone Commercial Retail C2 and has a future land use designation of commercial and urban service. The vacant parcel has approximately 150 feet of road frontage on North Highway 17 and 220 feet of, on West Oak Street. According to the NWI Wetlands Layer and the FEMA Flood Zone Layer on the GIS Reference Map, the lands do not appear to contain wetlands and are located within FEMA Flood Zone X, which is not a special flood hazard area. Should the applicant's request be approved, the applicant will then submit to Development Review Committee to satisfy additional development requirements. The DRC will review plans to ensure the development is compliant with local, state, and federal development regulations. Other agencies, including but not limited to Putnam County Public Works, Emergency Services, and St. John's River Water Management District, will review the plans to ensure the development will not adversely affect surrounding properties by complying with each agency's specific requirements associated with new development. Your aerial, future land use, zoning, conceptual site plan. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from Commercial Retail C2 to Commercial General C3 as the proposed amendment is consistent with the adopted goals, objectives, and policies of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan and is compatible with existing development in the area. Questions?
Any questions of Ms. Gazelle?
Yeah, where's the closest C3 to that? Looking at the map.
It's kind of, it's a slant.
I looked at the thing that said everything next to it was C2, but when I look at the map, I'm trying to figure out.
It is.
Shading so close.
Mm-hmm. So everything immediately surrounding it is C2, but if you go a slant just a little bit, there is C3.
C3 where?
Across the street to the north.
On Oak Street?
Across the street, across 17 to the north.
On Harris? Okay. Okay, so we've already got some sort of three, three, C3 zoning in.
We do, correct.
All right, that's all I need.
Any other questions? The applicant owner does not appear to be present. So we'll skip that phase of it and we'll bring you back to the board for discussion and decision. Bless you.
Move to approve.
Okay, because it meets the goals and objectives? Did a blue sheet?
Yeah, that's what I'm getting, I'm trying to get to it. I'm trying to find which one I'm supposed to. I recommend we approve REZ 24-000011 as it is consistent with goals, objectives, and policies of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan.
I'll second.
Okay, Justin and Julie, I have a proper motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All opposed? It seems to carry unanimously. This was an easy meeting. Now. We do have old business and new business. Zach, do you want to address anything from your email that you sent out after the last meeting?
No, ma'am, not necessarily. So in further discussions regarding that topic, the Commissioner Morris brought up whether or not there's a 5% threshold for community services and facilities and within the agriculture future land use designation, only 1, 2, and 3 are permitted with an ag. Type 4 would require a future land use map amendment. So we had some carryover language in there from our prior comprehensive plan before it was amended in 2021 that included solar farms as a type 4. Within that same policy subsection, I think it was H, that Mr. Morris brought up, the last sentence said that solar and wind farms are permitted. So I don't necessarily believe that the 5% threshold would apply to those passive utility generation types of developments. Nonetheless, if you look at Putnam County on a map and you look at the agricultural future land use designation, you can quite literally go from Melrose to Crescent City by tracing your finger over agriculture. And so that, that.
What percentage of land in Putnam County is ag?
Some two.
I can't remember.
Some 200,000 acres.
Right. It's over majority of the, the land.
Correct. So essentially, you know, that policy says that if it exceeds 5% in a distinctive future land use designation, then a map amendment would be needed. Well, that's extremely subjective because what I think is a distinct area, you all may disagree with what is distinct.
It's very subjective.
So, but essentially, I think when, when we ran the numbers, if you go 5% of 200,000, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of like 10,000 acres. Right now, we're sitting somewhere around 2,000 or 3,000 acres. So.
Now, that portion of the comp plan that states the 5% from what you read seems to be in conflict with the final statement that says that passive energy development can be, shall be approved.
Right, and I do think that the, that policy is more or less speaking to your fire stations, communication towers, you know, those types of infrastructure that are not preempted by state legislation to be required within our, our zoning designations. And then Commissioner Frolik brought up a really good point too, that the citing criteria for a solar farm is, is so immense that you, we won't see at this point in time solar farms popping up, you know, in every pocket of ag land that we have throughout the county. They're going to be very specific in where they target those developments. And then a sidebar I had with Mr. Perry, it really brought into more light, you know, right now, it takes 500 acres to generate enough electricity, but five years from now, the technology may be so advanced that it takes two acres to generate the same amount of, of electricity that currently requires 200. So it's just one of those things that, you know, we will continue to monitor it. We do, you know, when, when, when those projects come in, staff looks at them at, at every level of detail that we can and, and we try to work with those developers to, to make sure that we have a product that, that fits within our community. And then I don't know if you all followed, but as it went through the Board of County Commissioners hearings, Jennifer and I worked with the applicant and we built in additional standards for solar farms, which would essentially incentivize solar farm developers to increase their setbacks and their width of their vegetative buffers by increasing the impervious surface of the, the allowed development area. And when you start talking about solar farms, because they're all slanted, they're, they're already, basically the only impervious surface that's calculated is the four-by-four posts that go in the ground to support the, the solar panels themselves and then any sort of pavement or concrete. So what, what we will end up seeing is these companies will, you know, bring in their setbacks and their, their buffered, their widths of their buffer, but they're going to, they're not going to be able to get higher impervious surface because the panels are already going to take up so much area as it is.
Okay, you've generated two questions from me. Number one, do we need to amend the comp plan regarding that statement that's not in sync with what we did later? And do we need to amend the setback regulations for those sites?
So do we need to amend the comprehensive plan? I really don't think so. Not only do we have in-place language that already allows for the solar farms and wind farms to be existent, we also have got state preemption through Florida statutes. So do we need to amend it? No, should we? We probably could go in there and scratch out solar farms as a type 4 use just to alleviate any confusion from anyone reading the comprehensive plan. In terms of, do we need to go in and amend the setbacks for the ag zoning district? I would expressly say no because what would happen is, right now, your side and rear setbacks in ag are 10-foot.
Right.
My, my house is 15-foot from the property line in ag zoning. So if we go in and say the side setback is now 20-foot in ag, mine and everyone else in Putnam County that's within that area is now non-conforming. So we're going to create a huge bag of headaches for everyone.
Okay, okay. I just wondered if we need to put anything suggesting that for solar generation or wind generation, the setbacks should be X feet instead of what's normally there at 10 feet?
And the, the risk with that is that the statute says that you cannot pass an ordinance with more strict setbacks or vegetative buffer than what other similar uses would allow for.
All right. And also, there was a question that came up about taxation of these sites. And I did go out and look at the GIS map for the Coral Farms Road site. And it's multiple parcels, but one of the parcels I pulled up, the taxes on that property are in excess of $35,000. So they're not getting a huge exemption. They're paying more than would have been paid on the green bill. So we are getting tax money back on these solar farms.
Not only that, but the tax assessment goes towards, you know, EMS, garbage, you know, property, things like that. Well, those are unmanned sites, so you're not going to have someone calling 911. Well, you may, but it's not a regular situation.
But that's helping offset the cost of those services in the county, so it's very good. Any other questions about that situation? I do appreciate you bringing it up. I appreciate the discussion we've had. It's just one of those things, we're, we're bound by state law first. So I would be remiss if I did not thank our retiring members from the board. We have three that have expressed interest in retiring. Mr. Frolik has already entertained his resignation. Ms. Fortner is, is going to step off preemptively of her term ending. But when she showed us the pictures of her grandson, I understand why. And Mr. DeSantis has said that he would step down at the end of his term this year. So I cannot thank the three of you enough for the input that you have given this board over your tenure. Your counsel and your advice and your candor and your knowledge has made my job a whole lot easier. And I, for one, will miss having you sitting on this dais. But I, I look forward to being able to see you in the community and being able to talk to you without violating the sunshine law. So with that said, I, I also want to thank Commissioners Pickens, Turner, and Adams-Zack for their support and their guidance over their tenure that they have given to this board and to me. I've worked with them closely on the comp plan development. And Commissioners Pickens and Turner are former chairman of this board. So they have been invaluable as well, and I look forward to working with Commissioners Alexandra Newbold and Pellicier. I think we will have a good working relationship with the three of them. And I appreciate their willingness to throw their hat in the ring and be elected. So we're in good stead with that. Is there any other new business to come before the board? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion for the approval of amendments of the November 13th meeting. Thank you, Joey. Thank you, Aaron. Any discussion? I don't think there should be. All in favor of the approval of minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All opposed? Thank you very much. It is 4:44.